Is the infra? What is the infrastructure plan for schools that are outdated, particularly for our Title I schools? So. Miss, uh, Miss Huddle, we'll start with you first on that one.
Thank you. Um. There are some schools that appear to be scheduled for some updates. I think the ongoing issue has been money. Um, I would like to see several of our older schools. Renovated and updated as far as technology, but without the loss of history. For example, Carver and Crestwood Middle are our two school buildings that are specifically meaningful to the black community in this area. I'd like to be able to explore a way to preserve those buildings and history, but still bring them up to where they have the other, everything else that our other schools have. It's harder to do with an old building, but I think if we're creative, it can be done and we can respect. Um, the, um, dedication and hard work of groups like the Crestwood and Carver alums and draw them into that process. We also need additional schools and we've got to find new revenue streams to make that happen. And that's another area where I'd like to see our board members be just a bit more aggressive in securing additional funds so that we can do the things we need to do. Instead of just saying, okay, we're going to give you X dollars. So figure out how to make that work.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Willis, I'll ask the, uh, the question again. What is the infrastructure plan for schools that are outdated, particularly for our Title I schools?
Of course. So I have actually, within the past three weeks, have worked at two Title I schools here within the city of Chesapeake. And in one of them, which is where I'm long-term subbing right now, and I'll be subbing there until December 20th. They, one of the things that I am very a strong proponent of is making sure that we are expanding the buildings. However, like Malia advised, having it to where it's historic, it's done his, um, as historically possible to when the building was created. And the reason why I am stating that is because at the one that I'm currently working at, all of the resources, like the resource teachers, PE, all of that, they are out of portables, which is absolutely not safe for our students because if there's a situation like what unfortunately just happened this past week in Georgia, where there was the active shooter. Those portables are where they're going to hit first because there's going to be no security that can bring our students in that fast because they are located right next to the bu- bus ramp. So my focus is making sure that not only do we focus on those, the schools that have, um, that are, were created a lo- um, a long time ago that do not, that are not assisting us as well as they should be at this current state. However, those that have portables. And one of the things that I would, um, strongly encourage is having our, um, lobbyists go down to, uh, General Assembly and request more funds as well as I would look favorably upon speaking with our, um, upcoming city, um, city council to see if they are willing to take out debt to make sure that this is how, this happens because I'm sorry, but the safety of our students is what I am here for. That, that's what every school board member should be here for. It doesn't matter if we go into debt, if we can pay it off in a couple of years. Our safe, our, the safety for our upcoming educators and upcoming citizens is what matters and what we should be focused on. Thank you.
Mr. Shahir.
Thank you for that question, Ericson. Um. In no particular order, right? And so when, when dealing with infrastructure, like none of the solutions are sexy, right? Um, so the first thing we have to do is we have to listen, right? You, you can't have a plan, uh, for the people w- w- without the people. Uh, so town hall, small groups, but we gotta listen to the educators. We gotta listen to the students, we gotta listen to parents, administrators, school nutrition workers, janitors, everyone who was involved with educating our children. Uh, we need to say, we need to ask them, what do you need? In a school, what do you need from the school system? Um, so, so that's, that's first. We have to listen in order to, to, to create a plan. So once the plan is created, one, we need to build additional schools, right? We, we have students in, in portables, unacceptable. We have overcrowded, um, classrooms, u- unacceptable. Um, so we have to, once we create the plan, again, we have to build those new schools. Now, we also have to renovate the schools that we do have because we can't move all those students. They, they have to go somewhere, right? So we have to try to renovate what we do have to update it, modernize it. Um, uh, what's the word? Well, we're gonna bring in solar power to make sure that, again, that we're using the funds that we do have uh, to the maximum of, of our ability. And then we have to bring in some new revenue. Um, uh, Malia, um, mentioned bringing in new revenue. Um, so I'm actually working with a couple of corporations as we speak to have a Hampton Roads wide fundraiser just for Chesapeake school system. It's a fun fundraiser, right? Everybody will have some fun. Um, but it is projected to bring in between three and five million dollars every year directly into the school system. Now, we can use those funds to, to renovate the schools that we do have. We can put it in a, in a kitty, right, to, uh, build a new school. Um, but we have to independently find money because I'm getting word from our state legislators that our funding is actually decreasing. Uh, right now, we're spending about a little over $12,000 per student and that's going to decrease in, over the next few years to around a little over 10,000. Um, and you know, once you lose something, you kind of never, uh, get it back. So working on that infrastructure, um, again, we're gonna listen to the, to the people, right? We're gonna develop a plan and then we're gonna bring in some money so that we can make sure that our plan works.
Thank you, Mr. Shahir. Uh, Mr. Dono.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, you, you know, what is the infrastructure plan, right? I am, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. I am, if coming from the Marine Corps, like I know never to be the smartest person in the room. Right? I am not a city planner, right? I am not a financial guru like Shahir. My, my strengths lie in being a collaborator and being a leader and bringing people together and taking all the information to solve wicked problems, right? And our infrastructure right now, that plan, it's a wicked problem, right? Cause our funding is, like Shahir was saying, limited. We need, we need more funding and that funding can only go so many places, right? It's kind of like a zero sum game. Um, so we need to bring people together and understand what, where that money's going and what the, the main things that we can hit, like the closest alligators to the boat to start fixing. You talked about Title I schools. I think one of the problems right now in Chesapeake is that the funds are not distributed. I don't, I don't want to say equally because they shouldn't be distributed equally. They need to be distributed fairly, right? So when you have places like in Hickory or whatever, those schools are fine. They don't need a lot of the funding, right? Most of that funding needs to go to the Title I schools, like what, what was Rue was saying. Building better schools and getting rid of the, um, like the pod-like structures at some of these schools, because we have schools literally that are, like the rules are falling in, right? Which is totally unacceptable. Um, I also believe that there needs to be a change in the way that the school board requests money, asks for money and, and pushes for funding where we have to work with the city council, right? We have to make sure that the funding is there and then we push for more funding, like Rue was saying, if we need to go into debt, so be it. Right? But you, you know, you need to bring people together and collaborate and make sure that everyone's kind of on the same plan. And I will say that, um, you know, uh, you know, I have a, I have a, I did a lot of, you know, learning or whatever when I was in law school about negotiation, mediation, arbitration. And that's one of the most difficult things that we can do is bring people together. You know, bring the experts in the room, bring the parents in the room and make sure that that funding is going to the right places and making sure that funding is spent, uh, transparently. So that everyone knows where every dollar of that funding is going. And I know I'm over, so I apologize, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So we're gonna move on to the next question. Now, this one, uh, is a, is a tough one to, uh, discuss. We've seen on television every, uh, worldwide or, you know, uh, shooting that has occurred is involving youth. And we have seen the unfortunate use of assault rifles and crimes against schools all over, uh, the country. My question to you all are, what are your thoughts on how our school can keep our students and teachers as well as staff safe? Mr. Dono, we'll start with you first.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, um, this is very near and dear to my heart. You know, I was in the Marine Corps for a long time. I dealt with weapons my entire life. I'm a gun owner, you know? I believe in the Second Amendment, but like every other amendment, there needs to be restrictions. Like people don't need to be walking around with an AK-47, right? So, but that's something at a higher level. That's not, that's not for us to really decide. But the things that we can do at the school board level to protect our children, really, in my opinion, is not to add, you know, more walls or more security guards or armed teachers. I think that's absolutely bananas, right? Like, I'm not gonna have a, you know, police officer come in and teach my kid physics. Um, and I don't need someone who doesn't know how to use a weapon, carrying weapons, that just causes more problems. I believe what we need to do is take some of that funding and develop better mental health resources within our schools, hire more counselors, hire more child psychologists. Because it's been shown that the way to prevent kids from, you know, uh, acting out and grabbing a weapon and trying to hurt other people. They usually do that because they've been bullied. They feel like they're an outsider. And you have to stop that before it becomes an issue. And the way that you do that is to get mental health counseling, resources for children and counselors, you know, at the school, so that way they can recognize it and treat those students before it becomes something horrific where people are actually injured. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shahir.
Thank you for that question. Um. So again, school safety is, is, is of the utmost importance, right? Um, and, and no particular order, uh, random and monthly searches, training for our teachers, staff and students, random mental health screenings. Create a mental health hotline. Create a see something, say something anonymous hotline. Uh, decrease school sizes. We talked, kind of talked about that a little bit. Um, mandated mesh, clear book bags and a one entry, uh, into the school, multiple exits, but one entry. Um, we, we kind of talked about preventing, um, things kind of before they happen, right? Uh, I have just put together a proposal. I put together, I've been putting it together and I actually just sent it to every mayor and sheriff in the Hampton Roads area because there has been an uptick in, in violence in our schools and things that have happened. Um, so this proposal is to train and certify barbers and beauticians in the Hampton Roads area in conflict resolution. We all get our haircut, we all get our hair done, uh, you know, barbers and beauticians are, are pillars of the, of the community. And so having them, uh, trained in conflict resolution, having them certified and, and having them, uh, they, them having resources that they can utilize, um, so that we can stop some of the, uh, conflict that goes on in our school. I think, again, you know, it's an ounce of prevention kind of thing, right? Uh, so every mayor in this, in the Hampton Roads area and sheriff has that plan, uh, either on their desk or, or in their email. Um, so again, school safety, uh, is, is of the utmost important. And putting some of these things in place will stop, will, will deter some of those things, you know? We can't stop everything, but it will definitely, uh, deter some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Willis.
Of course. So one of the things that is most proven throughout all these, um, unfortunate active gun shootings, uh, within our schools is that these kids are usually taking their parents' guns. They're taking like one of their family members' guns. And one of the things that we should be looking at and especially into is having, um, utilizing the free gun locks that you, I know that Moms Man, um, action, they are actively promoting it. I know Virginia Beach, uh, school board, they are having it, um, spoken about with, over the next two school board meetings to implement that every single parent that owns a, um, that owns a handgun, either get information or get one for themselves. So then we can make sure that we are not having an active, um, shooter just because it is usually the students because they know the layout of the schools. And sometimes it's just because they think, oh, we're, especially if it's like an elementary student, they think that it's cool. And they think that it's okay to come, but, uh, like bring it to school to show it off. But that's not safe for anyone, which is why we should be giving information to the parents, making sure that they can get these gun locks to make sure that they don't get into our little one's hands. Because that is how everything is going to become much more dangerous because they don't understand what, what it is most times. And then another thing that I would, um, work in or I would promote is the crime prevention through environmental design. Um, it gives much more of, um, it has been proven to reduce crime rate within the facilities of the school as well as making sure that our students, um, our students, faculty and, um, parents are able to build more of a community basis around it. Yeah. Thank you, Ericson.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Huddle.
Thank you. Um, when I was at Oscar Smith prior to retiring, we had a group called Pals for Peers. And Pals for Peers were students who were trained, um, with basic counseling, listening skills to kind of be our first alert because if something's going on with a child in the building, the first person to know it is going to be one of their peers. They're going to have seen, observed, heard, or had another child share something with them. Um, another thing that we had that was very successful at Oscar Smith was Paul Joseph has a tip line because we know that what happens in the community comes to school. And through that tip line that Mr. Joseph operates, he was able to be proactive when he got word that certain issues may be coming to school with certain students. So I, I think it's amazing in Chesapeake that we probably don't realize the number of things that we've prevented. I think the hard building features like the new vestibules, um, the check-in points, those are good things. But placing this responsibility solely on the schools, in my opinion, is short-sighted. This is a team and a community problem. And it starts with what happens in the home. It is carried over into gun legislation, who can get a gun. Um, what you can do with it after you get it. I have said multiple times, the things that I have to do to drive my car. If I had to do those same things, um, for the guns that I have inherited from my father, which are secured in my home, um, licensed, insured, all of those kinds of things, we need to be much more proactive. Mental health is a big part, but again, placing the responsibility solely on the schools and the whole concept of thoughts and prayers when something happens, hasn't gotten us very far. Thoughts and prayers are well and good, but policy and change and the results of elections are where we're going to get some significant change made. And I think we need to look at it not just from a school perspective, but from a legislative and a community and a family perspective and have all of the puzzle pieces working together so that our schools are safe. One of the very first school shootings was right up the street in Atlantic Shores and as Rue noted, it happened in a portable. Um, so it's sad that we have that distinction, but that happened so long ago that it still doesn't appear we've learned a lot from it and we've got to do a lot better on this topic and quit kicking the can down the road and listening to legislators say, this is not the time to deal with it. It's too soon. It's taking too many of our young people. I heard on NPR yesterday that right now gun violence is the number one killer of youth and I think it's between 15 and 25, which that's an ugly statistic that we need to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huddle, for that. Um, we're gonna move it on to our next, uh, question. Now, I'm sure you all are aware that there is a shortage of teachers nationwide and students continuing to struggle with learning loss due to COVID. Uh, now, we're gonna start with Ms. Huddle. What specific ideas do you have to address teacher shortage?
Thank you for that question. Teacher shortage and teacher retention have concerned me for a long time. For starters, um, lots of students see what their teachers deal with in a school building on a daily basis and not as many young people are choosing to go into the profession because they're not seeing the benefits of it and they're seeing their teachers that they respect get beat up and get blamed for problems that they didn't cause. Um, we tend to, in my opinion, scapegoat teachers, but we don't give them the tools and the things that they need to do the job that we'd like them to do. And one of those things is some autonomy and some input and having their skill set, their credentials, all of those things valued. I think we need to look at the benefits and pay and the different, um, compensation areas that we offer. Any of us on here who are educators will tell you that years ago, when the school system got created and added creative and added our school system pharmacy and our clinics during a time when they couldn't necessarily provide us pay increases, that was one of the best benefits we've ever received. But I think we need to look long and hard at how to encourage more folks to go into teaching. Virginia used to have a teacher loan forgiveness program that was included in the state budget. Um, that program went away years ago and I think it was Jamil who said earlier, once you lose something, you never get it back. Um, so some of those kinds of things, in addition to looking at teachers workload and what we're actually expecting them to do in the course of a school day. Um, there's, as teachers will say, just let me teach. And I used to refer to all of the other things that got piled on our plates as administrivia. But I think we need to free up teachers to teach and empower them to do that and know that they're valued as they do it so that we can hire and retain. And then look at some creative ways for encouraging young people to go into the profession. Not short-circuiting, short-circuiting the qualifications to be a teacher, but helping to motivate folks to realize that going through that process is worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Willis.
Of course. So being an individual who is a long, um, a long-term sub that is working on getting my provisional license to teach. One of the ways that you can get more individuals to come to Chesapeake is allowing for individuals such as, um, such as substitutes myself, such as myself. The opportunity to get, um, such as stipends, uh, either stipends, some form of money that they can find in a program that will allow for individuals, um, within cer- sorry, give me a second, uh, within uh, within like something like myself, uh, giving money to individuals who need to get the certification such as Praxis. The, um, because I know that you have to pay money to get the veto of reading and writing uh, to just get a provisional license here in the state of Virginia. As well as bringing our starting salary, like teacher salary, to a minimum $60,000 and providing a bonus. If we, if the most that we can do is provide that bonus at the beginning of the school year and keep it at the starting rate that we are at right now, that might make it to where we can get more educators, like younger educators. However, we have to find the funds, which is where I will be a strong proponent of bringing our, or putting our lobbyists to the General Assembly to make sure that we can advocate for more funding as well as giving our educators a seat at the table when we are writing our, um, employee contracts or at least pulling away the, um, the statement within the school board that doesn't allow teachers to be able to speak at the school board meetings about issues that they are currently facing within their school systems. Because that unfortunately makes it to where we can't hear from the individuals who are actually doing the work. Because they are going through things that the principals aren't going to address to the superintendent. Because I was long-term subbing at, um, J. Treacle just a little bit ago and they, they were advising about how the, um, special education, um, like the documentations aren't put in correctly. So when it comes down to evaluations, it's a lot harder for the students to get the help that they need because the school system isn't providing them the assistance that they actively need within, uh, within their classroom to try to find a sense of stability, at least within their environment. Oh, and I assume I'm over my time, so thank you, Ericson.
You, you're fine, you're fine. Um, Mr. Shahir, and, and again, we have to keep it at least two, two minutes, uh, candidates, if you don't mind, if you don't mind. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Shahir.
I'm gonna try to make up some of that time. Got it. Uh, so again, you can't have a plan for the people without the people, right? So again, the first part of the plan is to listen, right? Listen to the educators. When I started, uh, camp, the first thing I was talking to people like, hey, what's wrong? What's going on? Uh, I used to be a paramedic, so you would always have to ask, well, what would make it better, right? Um, and it came down to kind of two things, right? Money, work conditions, right? So having more money in your paycheck, um, having more money to, you know, again, Chesapeake Public Schools is the largest educator, the, the largest employer in the city of Chesapeake, right? And we, we, we tout and we believe that, hey, Chesapeake is a great place to live, learn, work, play and farm, right? But if I don't make enough money to live in Chesapeake, well, then, you know, I'm, and then again, building that community. If I don't live here, if I live somewhere else, y- you know, my community is only as strong as the, the, the parts of the village, uh, of the school, right? Uh, of the village. Um, so again, we're gonna listen, uh, and we're gonna put a plan together. But again, most of it comes down to money and work conditions and those things take funding. Again, I'm, I'm working on a, a fundraiser that's gonna bring, bring between three and five million dollars, uh, into the, uh, school system. And again, we can use those funds for, uh, bonuses, raises, um, retention, recruitment. Um, but also, um, making our, our, our working conditions better. Um, as, uh, Rue mentioned, you know, having that, that stipend to do certain things. Uh, when I was educated, I think my check was $900 every two weeks and I spent 700 back in my classroom, right? Buying compasses and protractors and rulers, um, so having a, a source so that teachers, teachers are spending their own money, their resources, right? Makes it all better. Again, I'm gonna try to keep, we keep with the time, but, um, bringing more money into the school system will definitely help, um, with, uh, retention, uh, and recruitment.
Thank you, Mr. Dono.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know,
Yeah, thank you. You know, a lot of times people say, you know, money is the only thing because it's a job, right? I, I don't, I don't believe that for teachers. No one goes to be a teacher because of money. But money is super important. And I think our teachers need to be paid better, like plain and simple. That's like one of the things that's gonna retain teachers, because if they're gonna work as hard as they do. They need to be compensated appropriate for, appropriately for it. I truly believe that you can't have anything if you don't have teachers and the, and teachers in our communities are probably the most important people in our communities. You can't have doctors, you can't have firefighters, you can't have attack helicopter pilots if you don't have teachers. Right? That teach children from like four years old on to be good citizens and be good people and learn how to think. Right? So I'm gonna tell you right now, like the Dunning Kruger effect in our society is a real thing. But you know, increased pay allow our teachers to have collective bargaining so they can bargain better and negotiate better for fair pay, which I believe needs to be much higher than it is. And benefits within the school to make them feel appreciated. And on top of that, teachers need to be appreciated. And they need to be treated with respect. And I think over the last however many years, that's kind of gone downhill a little bit. And people think that teachers are their kids babysitter. Right? And if their kids are failing, it's not, it's not because of what's happening at home, it's the teacher's fault. And I think we need to implement regulations. And, and rule and set some kind of guidelines or barriers or left and right lateral limits or whatever for school administrators to understand that you sometimes need to protect the teachers. And, and they need to be treated with respect and dignity. And, and let it be known that they're, they're the most important people, I, I believe in our community. And that, and that, I think that goes a long way. And on top of that, I think we also have that, like what Rue was saying, have opportunities for teachers. To increase their skills and upskill themselves. So that way they can kind of, you know, continue to grow. And I'll stop there. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a follow up for all, for all the candidates. We want to keep the answer under sixty seconds. That follow up is some teachers feel that when recommendations or changes in policy and guidelines are instituted. Little, little considerations are made for how it will impact the teacher's responsibilities. Now, as a result, student outcome. How would you address their concerns of inclusion in the decision process? We'll start with Mr. Dono.
Yeah, so under sixty seconds, I think before the, the policy is implemented, you have to bring the teachers in and say, hey, this is what our policy is. And have them kind of give you their inputs. Because that's, that's a short sighted. Not appropriate way to make policy or make decisions, right? So what people are doing is they're getting the best answer that they think is appropriate without talking to the experts or the people that are affected. And they're implementing that policy without any kind of like thinking about the logistics train that goes along with that, right? Or the, the implications that that might have down the road. And it's one of those situations of cutting you nose despite your face. And I think the way that you, you don't do that. Is early on your decision making process, you bring in all the stakeholders, which includes the parents. And the teachers and the administrators and get their point of view as well and use that as data points to create your plan. Instead of just implementing a plan because you think it's the best plan. And I'll thank you. Under, under sixty seconds.
There you go, there you go. Mrs. Shahir.
In order to improve your bottom line, you have to improve your frontline, right? So you, you gotta take care of the teachers, right? And one of the things that we kind of all talked about, none of the members on the board are educators, right? You have at least three educators, former educators, people who have worked in the school system. At, at least three here. Greg was an instructor, so he's an educator as well. So having someone with institutional knowledge, someone with, having someone with battle scars, right? I think Rue said she got bit the other day, right? So having someone with battle scars. That, that's how you, that's how you get the things that the teachers want, the things that they need, that's how you get them implemented by listening, right? And again, having people on the board who have been there, who have walked in those shoes. It, it definitely helps.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Willis.
Of course. So I had kind of already like answer the question before, but one of the things that I definitely agree with is having it to where we are able to reestablish the the connection between the Chesapeake Education Association and the school boards. Like, representation through the back, because they would have meetings in background to address certain like policies that were about to be brought up about how the teachers felt. As well as making sure that we could hear about like how Greg was talking about the principals as well as the the parents, making sure that everyone is brought to the table. However, making sure that even in schools. We are like, once we are able to establish that that relationship, making sure that we are promoting the union membership for all teachers. And yeah.
Thank you so much. Ms. Huddle.
In my years in the school system. I feel like we had too many times when we were reactive with policy instead of proactive. And as Greg mentioned in his answer. Putting things together before the release comes out to the public. Pulling all the people who are responsible together, actually getting teacher input and saying. You know, we've kind of troubleshooted our way through part of this. What have we missed? That step doesn't generally happen. It's like, okay, these great minds up here somewhere have decided this thing. And then it gets thrown at teachers sort of with the, okay, here it is. Now you make it work. And that part needs to change so that everybody has some ownership of the policy changes. And CEA and the representation there is a really good place to start. So I would support reinstituting the monthly meetings that CEA used to have with administrative staff. And using those channels. So that communication between admin and staff is two way and not just one way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are coming close to a close. Before I will pass it on to the candidates again to give a one minute closing statement. I do would like to remind you all that this is hosted by the Chesapeake Branch NAACP along with the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Chesapeake and Virginia Beach Alumni Chapter. And also these two organizations are nonpartisans that reached out to all the candidates to provide a platform for them to share why they are running. So without that, I would like to start off with Ms. Huddle. If you don't mind giving your one minute closing to, to everyone here.
Thank you, Arrington. Again, if you'd like to look up more information, my website is maleahuddle.org. As I've shared previously, I have a vested interest and a really strong desire to continue to give back to a school system. And a profession that has given me so much. I ask for your vote so that I can do that. And I ask that all of those participating in this conference. Also look at how you can be more involved in supporting teachers and schools as an individual so that we're all in this team together. And we can make some positive changes in Chesapeake. Thank you, NAACP and Delta Sigma Theta. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Huddle. And I apologize, I have another question to ask for all the candidates. So in addition to your closing statement. What is next for you all, win or lose after this election? I'll start, Ms. Huddle, we'll start with you.
I am still an active Chesapeake Public Schools sub. I'm the current vice president for the Virginia Education Association retired. So I'll be advocating on that level and my plan will be when I finish serving the second term to run for president of our retired teachers group. I'm active with Elizabeth River Retired Educators. I'm also a Chesapeake Master Gardener. So I've got my hands in lots of little things to try and make my community better. I would like to be able to do that by being a school board member. But if for some reason that door doesn't open, then there are plenty of other doors that, that I'll keep walking through on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Willis.
Of course. Good afternoon. My name is Rue Willis. I'm another candidate for Chesapeake School Board. Like I've been previously advising, the whole entire reason why I decided to run was because as an educator, I saw the active struggles within the school system. And I just saw how we could make make it easier for new educators that are coming into the Chesapeake School System. To make sure we don't have that retention loss because of how our teachers are start are starting just to get so burnt out because they don't have any say. I'm here to fight for an education system that empowers all children, no matter the background or the circumstances that they go through. I just want to make sure that we are rebuilding stronger and more resilient people than ever before. Again, my name is Rue Willis. I'm running for school board and win or lose. I will be working with our delegates and I'll be working with our school board members. Continuously, I'll be working with our ongoing Chesapeake Education Association. To make sure that everyone, like an educator's voice is heard within our, within our systems. Whether it be local or statewide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Mr. Shahir.
I want to thank again NAACP and Delta Sigma Theta and to you, Arrington, your great host. It's, it's been my pleasure to, to be here this evening. I, I started by saying I'm running because I care, right? So it's, it's a, it's an acronym, right? Care, C. I took a sign language class, so C, community involvement. A, academic excellence, R, fiscal responsibility, and E, equity and inclusion. And those are the reasons that I'm here to make sure that every educator, scholar, bus driver, school nutrition worker, engineer, and the, and the Chesapeake School System gets everything that they need because they deserve it. I'm a small business owner, community advocate. Again, I've already presented some plans to the mayor and sheriff's department. I'm working on a few others. I'm working on a fundraiser for the for the school system to make sure that those things happen. I'm, I'm here. And, and I'm not going anywhere. They say like a tree planted by the water. I'm, I'm not going anywhere. Thanks again, NAACP. Oh, I'm actually a member of the, I'm the Economic Development Chair. So yeah, I'll be doing that also. Thanks again to NAACP, Delta Sigma Theta, you, Arrington. I am Jamil Shahir, candidate for school board, first in your hearts and the last name on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dono.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again to the NAACP and Delta Sigma Theta. I really appreciate you giving us the time to talk to everybody. Again, I'm Greg Dono. I'm running for Chesapeake School Board. If you, you know, we kind of talked about a lot of things I'm running for and why. If you want to find out more, votefordono.com, you can find out more information about me or ask me any questions that you want. I do want to point out, you know, just another thing that I'm running for is, and the reason I started running was back in twenty sixteen when, you know, the elections happened and the you know, the head of education was, was brought on. They started doing a lot of things that I felt, you know, as an attorney and as a Marine Corps veteran were unconstitutional and dangerous for our children. And I want to be a voice in the school board to stop that from happening and be an ethical and moral. You know, buttress, I guess, against people, you know, whitewashing our history, burning our books. And not to be like doom and gloom, but I, you know, I feel that that is the way that sometimes our community are going. And the board that we have that you see before you here, there's nine people on the school board, four of us here. We all have kind of a little bit of different ideas on how things happen, but I think that makes the best ideas and, and the best policies when people kind of disagree and are able to come back together and communicate. And talk to one another and collaborate. And I think the people here in this room that are speaking to you today can do that, because we've done that already. So again, thank you for having us on. And what, you know, what am I gonna do after this? You know, win or lose, I'm still gonna be active in the community. You know, trying to help the school board and the city council and the democratic community kind of advance themselves within, within this community. I also have two small children, like I said, in the public school system. They're in third and fourth grade and I'm gonna be raising them. And continuing on, you know, to work to make, you know, their lives, their lives better as well. Again, thank you so much for having us. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all the candidates for joining this forum. Before we close, ladies and gents, I would like to plug in a few things. There will be another forum happening promptly at seven fifteen. This will be the mayor and city council forum that will be moderated by the media iconist Elvita Yule. So you're gonna be in for a treat for that. Also, there is a, there is a survey provided in the chat for all to complete. If you, you know, if you, if you can, make sure you complete that. And also also you can, if you would like to register for the next forum, again, that, that link is in the chat for the mayor and city council candidates. Also, I would like to plug in an event happening that will be hosted by the NAACP Chesapeake Chapter. It'll be the NAACP Fifty-seventh Annual Freedom Fund happening Saturday, October fifth at New Galley. Missionary Baptist Church from eleven AM to one PM. I believe information about that event will be provided in the chat. So be sure to check that out. And also, I will, again, I would like to thank everybody for attending. I would like to thank thank you all for, for our hosts, for our, for our kind hosts, Chesapeake Branch of the NAACP. Along with the Chesapeake and Virginia Beach Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Again, ladies and gents, early voting is happening as we speak. It will be happening, I believe, until November second. And then the grand finale will be November fifth. So make sure you are registered to vote. Your vote matters, a quote. If, if you, if I, I think I still have a little time, I would like to share, this was provided by Martin Luther King Jr. And it said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." So please don't be silent, make sure to vote and make sure to register for the next forum happening exactly at seven fifteen. So it is seven oh seven now, so you all have a quick chance to, a quick bathroom break or snack or something like something like that. Take a quick breather, but be sure to stay tuned and to log on to this forum. Again, this will be moderated by Ms. Elvita Yule and I would like
I want to make a correction there. The seven fifteen forum is, is for the Chesapeake City Council. Mayor will be on Wednesday, October second.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Copeland. So yes, so correction, it'll be just the, the city council. So please be sure to register for that that's happening again at seven fifteen. So for all that stayed on this call. Please, the link is provided in the chat. So again, I just want to thank you all for allowing me to moderate this. And, and excited to hear the great things that these candidates had mentioned. And yeah, everyone, take care. Make sure you are registered to vote.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You have a blessing.
Thank you, everyone.